Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone could please, please take a seat. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll, please?
Plumbidville Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harrison, Weezer, Corretts, Kirkorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, thirteen members, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Rodriguez moves, and Buscaino second, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves, and Corretts seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 8B to November 2nd.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered, please continue.
Items one through eight are items for which public hearings have been held. Motions are required for Items 8A and 8C. Do you wish to hold those two items on the desk?
Let's, let's hold that for right now, and prepare to move forward on the remaining items. If you'd please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ice.
Thank you very much. Continue.
Items nine through eleven are items for which a public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. You have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all those items.
Okay, so let's, let's hold those items, and then move forward.
End.
Please continue.
And, Mr. President, that takes the council back to either presentations, items called "special," or general public comment.
Thank you. Mr. Price, it's my understanding that you'd like to introduce someone to the body. Go right ahead.
Let me ask the Bowers family to join me. Mr. President, members, our older adult population serves a very important function, as you know, in the presence and in the future of our, of our community. And today, we are excited to celebrate the ninetieth birthday of a distinguished Angelino, Mr. Horace Bowers. Mr. Bowers and his lovely wife, Alice, have been real business pioneers in our community. A legacy business they established, Bowers Cleaners, over fifty years ago. And it remains today a real beacon of, of hope, a source of inspiration, and a positive example of community economic development. And so, we're just so happy to celebrate the ninetieth birthday of, of Mr. Bowers. He and his wife started the cleaners there, moved the cleaners, actually from Westlake to Central Avenue, Twenty-Fifth and Central, over fifty years ago. And as I said, they have been a landmark there. And we're excited with the family that's come to celebrate with him, his son, Horace Bowers Jr., Eric and, and his wife Kimberly, of course Vivian, and her husband Greg, and, and Mrs. Bowers.
She got lost.
Well, she's that lost. She's, she's that, she's that here with us. But we just want to say, happy birthday. You know, this has been a, a week of celebration, stat, last Friday. We, we celebrated with him at the African-American Museum, and of course, today, his actual birthday. We're excited to present birthday greetings, and it's signed, Mr. Bowers, by the council president and all the members of the city council.
Thank you. Give him a round of applause.
And we're excited to announce that, excited to announce that we will soon be dedicating the corner of Twenty-Fifth and Central as Bowers Square.
All right.
Again, just again, recognition of your contribution, of your being such an inspirational figure, not only to your family, but to the community and friends as well. We love you, congratulations, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Would you care to say a few, a few words?
Oh, I just want to thank you for all of—
Here, come up here.
Thank you for all of the kind things you've said. I appreciate them, and I'm gonna try to make them be true. And, uh, the plaque, I've been looking for this one. Thank you so much for the, for the part of the ninth district, that's where we are, led by Brother Price here. And we just thank all of you, the council, and all for your, all your good work. Okay. If I could ask Mr. Englander to—Mr. Englander, can you take over for a moment, please? And then if I could get Mr. Corretts and Mr. Buscaino to join me at the center aisle.
All right, so while they're making their way to the podium, the council president has made yet another mistake of giving me the microphone. So I'll just say good morning. See if you're all listening.
Calling on the animals. Where are the animals? If we could bring the cats, the kittens, bring Charlie. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Charlie. And I'm gonna let, in a moment, we'll have Mr. Corretts introduce our feline friends, one of which I've already named Top Cat, but I'll let you introduce him. Anyway, today is a, a special day. We've got Mr. Buscaino representing the fifteenth district that has some very important news where it relates to pets, and he wants to highlight some individuals from the community. This is Pet Adoption Friday, and Mr. Corretts and I are doing a joint pet adoption. Again, we have two wonderful kitty, kitty cats, and who I have with me is a little fellow named Charlie. And Charlie, I already have a Charlie at home, and you look just like him, so you definitely look like a Charlie. I was speaking, Mr. Corretts, with a group of people yesterday, and we were talking about unconditional love. And that's one thing with a companion animal, it's, you can't even articulate the, the connection and the love that you get from them, and they really appreciate the love that you give them in return. We at the city of Los Angeles, we have a one-hundred percent adoption rate where it relates to every dog that has ever been brought before this council. That is very important to us, and we want to keep that one-hundred percent adoption rate alive and well. So what I have for you today is Charlie, who's approximately five years old. He is a mixed terrier and poodleish and whatever. He's a, what, what my dad used to call a mutt, which are the best companion animals, best companion animals to have in the world. Like I said, Charlie is five, so this is about as big, this is as big as he's gonna get depending on if you watch his diet. So he's not gonna grow much, he's got a good disposition, and what he's doing, he's here today because he's looking for a home. He wants to give you love, and he wants to accept some love in return. So I'm asking for anyone that is watching this on, on television, anybody that's in the building or next door, to please run over. We're gonna have Arlene, who's over in the corner. Arlene and I have been working together on pet adoptions for, I think, about eight to ten years. And again, like I said, we have a one-hundred percent adoption rate, and we want to keep that alive. So if anybody here would like to adopt Charlie, we're gonna keep Charlie with us for a while. She, okay, we, we, we might, we might, we might have, we might have a winner, even, even though there are, there are a couple of, whoa, whoa, there are a couple of people that are discussing this right now as well. So I love it when we bring in a, you're very popular, Charlie. But anyway, with that said, don't—
We'll take it. She said, "We'll take it."
Don't, don't, don't be depressed. Don't be upset if Charlie does find a home, 'cause I believe that he will. But we have six other facilities, and we have other great organizations throughout the city of Los Angeles. If you want a big dog, they'll find you a big dog. If you want a little dog, they can find you a little dog. If you want an old dog, if you want a sick, you name it, we, if you want a companion animal, we will help you find one. Don't hesitate to call 888-452-7381. And with that said, I want to turn this over to Mr. Corretts, who was with me last Saturday, members. I received an award from the Stray Cat Alliance. And Mr. Corretts and his wife were there. Corretts introduced me, and it was on their thirty-third wedding anniversary. So let's give Mr. Corretts a round of applause, 'cause he's celebrating a very important time. So with that said, Mr. Corretts, I'm gonna take Charlie and let you try to sell TC, TC Top Cat.
Well, I'm glad to be here on this Feline Friday. We've picked out two cats for a forever home. This one was named Mel, but I think it's being renamed Top Cat. He is a four-month-old, short-haired male, neutered, black kitten. His name is Luke Skywhisker. He's already fixed, vaccinated, microchipped, ASPCA due to a grant, has taken care of the adoption fees, so if anyone wants this cat, you can come fill out the paperwork, and you can walk out with him.
You mean for free?
For free.
You mean for free?
For free. And the ASPCA has also done a grant with the city, so for as long as it lasts, any cat that's over four months old is also a, a free cat out of our shelters. So we have great representatives that can do all the paperwork, so Luke Skywhisker is this very sweet, black, short-haired one, and I'm gonna give him to—
I'm allergic.
An allergic fellow council member. We also have Mel, a six-month-old female, who's, who's a sweetie as well. A little nervous. She is a brown, tabby, Maine Coon cat, and this is a great chance to save the lives of these kitties, including the one that is ruining my suit with her claws right now. So let's try to get these two cuties adopted. I'd hate to have to send them back to their shelters. To the, it's a little harder to get kittens adopted, but this is your chance to save the life of an adorable kitten. So if you're hearing this in City Hall, listening to the meeting, come down to the council chambers if you'd like to adopt a gorgeous kitten, and when you adopt them, you're saving their lives. Thank you.
Let's give Mr. Corretts a round of applause, and then give the cats a round of applause. And before, before I turn this over to Mr. Buscaino, I want to introduce what I'm hoping, this is what you call pressure. Come, let, let, come on around. What I hope I am doing now is introducing to you Charlie's new parents. Give them a round of applause. Come on. I want you to introduce both of yourselves. Look at your two mommies here, Charlie. Come on. Who are you? Who are you? Where are you from, and why are you here?
What's your name?
Um, Kaya.
Where are you from?
Burbank.
And why are you here? To take Charlie home?
To take Charlie home.
Let's give them a round of applause. Our one-hundred percent adoption rate still lives. With that said, I'd like to bring up from the great fifteenth district, our colleague, Joe Buscaino, lovingly referred to as Steve.
Thank you. Lots of love here in council chambers. It does take our, our friends here. Thank you so much, Mr. President. Really pleased to join you and Mr. Corretts in our Pet Adoption Friday here. And in the spirit of Pet Adoption Friday, it gives me great joy to introduce to you an incredible nonprofit organization and friends of our animal shelters in San Pedro, the Pedro Pet Pals. And as you see on your screen, what they're doing, they're, they're bringing, they're putting pet adoption on wheels and bringing pet adoption to neighborhoods across the city of Los Angeles. Founded by Teresa Sardisco in 2001, Pedro Pet Pals actively raises funds to support cities, our cities' local animal shelters with supplies, medical equipment, and other items that they can't afford. And their mission statement is to comfort and support, to comfort and support, rather, the wayward animals across LA. And they are not a rescue shelter, but play a crucial role in filling the gap in the needs of our local shelters and pet owners. And as you may know, nearly three million animals are killed in America's shelters because they don't have a home, or simply because shelters don't have the resources, capacity to keep them alive. And Pedro Pet Pals continuously works with the community to find, foster, and adoption homes for animals, especially those at risk of being euthanized. So they're— So their work doesn't stop there. You can see the screen here, the great work that Pedro Pet Pals is doing. They provide nutrients, pay vouchers to pet owners, and host vaccine and microchip clinics. They have programs that support homeless individuals with their pets. They host community events to spread awareness of their programs. You'll see pictures of boxes up on the screen. These are supplies that the Pedro Pet Pals help support pets that lost their homes in recent fires in California. And through their Wings of Rescue program, they participate in flight rescues of animals in distress of, for animals that need to be transported long distances. And my favorite service that they provide is the adoption bus. And here, you'll see that Pedro Pet Pals renovated the interior and exterior of a big bus to turn it into a mobile clinic and carrier for animals coming to and from shelters and adoption fairs. So these, this Pedro Pet Pals organization, I've been wanting to bring them in, and it's fitting that we do so today. We thank you, Teresa, and the entire board that's before you. Teresa is in love with our council president, knowing that he does this every other week, and she says she wants to adopt Herb Wesen and bring him, but I don't know, he's taking Teresa. But Herb's love for, oh, not like that, sorry. Herb's love for our animals in shelters across the city does not go unnoticed. So help me introduce Teresa Sardisco, the president of Pedro Pet Pals.
Hi, thank you, everybody, for having us. We are a unique group. We are pretty much funders. We fill the gap where the city cannot do. We provide a lot of services for the city and the community. We pay for vaccine clinics from South LA to San Pedro in the heavy populated areas. We have a distemper breakout right now, so we will be doing a Spain, uh, a vaccine clinic in Wilmington, November 17th. Meanwhile, we do have the only adoption bus that's gonna be set up for LA City Shelters, and Dove from City Attorney is just filling the paperwork out, so we will be unveiling that pretty soon. Meanwhile, I'd like to thank Joe Buscaino for all his support and everybody else. We raise all our funds, all on fundraising only. So thank you, Joe. This is for you.
Thank you. Thank you. Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Allow me to ask Mr. President and Mr. Coretts for joining us in presenting Pedro Pet Pals on their service and excellence to our great city and our shelters in every corner of the City of Los Angeles. Thank you, we love you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Let's give them one more round of applause for helping our four-legged friends.
All right, our next contestant, Mitchell Farrell. Come on down.
Chief and Ms. Baker, please stand with me. Yes.
all the way from Talaqua, Oklahoma, among also Angelinos representing the Cherokee Nation. I am glad to welcome this delegation. We are very honored to welcome Principal Chief Bill John Baker, who's leading this delegation, born and raised, fourth generation from Talaqua, Oklahoma. He is joined by First Lady of the Cherokee Nation, Sherri Baker, Secretary of State, Chuck Hoskin Jr., Lisa Long, Government Relations, Kamisha Hare Daniels, Government Relations, Julie Hubbard, Communications Manager, Tommy Wildcat, Cherokee National Treasurer, Bob Dottery, Executive Director, Community and Cultural Outreach, Donnie Squirrel, Community and Cultural Outreach, Kevin Stretch, Community and Cultural Outreach, Robert Lewis, Storyteller, and Commissioner Cynthia Ruiz, a known Cherokee leader to all of us. Colleagues, the Cherokee Nation is a sovereign tribal government, and is the largest Native American tribe in the United States, with more than 360,000 tribal citizens, and employs more than 11,000 people with a $2 billion economic impact in my home state of Oklahoma. Cultural identity and sense of community are important values in the tribe today. It operates as a Cherokee language immersion school. It also maintains a bison ranch. It has built 700 new homes for its tribal citizens since 2012, and donates more than $5 million each year to public schools. Under the leadership of Principal Chief Bill John Baker and his administration, the Cherokee Nation operates the largest tribal health system in the nation, with more than 1.2 million patient visits per year. The tribe will open the largest tribal outpatient health facility in the entire country next The Cherokee Nation maintains its headquarters in Talaqua, as I've mentioned, and visits its 23 satellite at-large citizen community groups. The Los Angeles Cherokee Nation affiliate is led by, as I mentioned, Commissioner Cynthia Ruiz, a Cherokee citizen who is president also of the City Employee Pension Board. The delegation is here for their annual gathering at the Autry this coming weekend. Colleagues, as we led the initiative to replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day, Principal Chief Baker was supportive all the way from Oklahoma. He wrote a letter in support of our efforts, and last week, we had our historic inaugural celebration. And let me just read an excerpt of the letter that was submitted last August before our historic August 30th vote of 2017. This was in the letter. "A transition from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day would signify Los Angeles as a leader in honoring the culture, heritage, and traditional lifeways of nation, I'm sorry, of native peoples in history, as well as recognizing California's federally recognized tribes that are all modern, sovereign governments." As you know, Los Angeles was a destination location for so many tribal citizens, including Cherokees, when the federal government enacted the Indian Relocation Act of 1956. Many families were moved off of their historical tribal and family homelands to make modern cities like Los Angeles. And colleagues, we all know that the Indian Relocation Act of 1956 was a disaster for the Native American community. But through decades of transcending those difficulties of the Native Americans, who were, for all practical purposes, forcefully relocated to urban centers, we've transcended those difficulties over the last several decades and have come out stronger than ever before. So Chief Baker, I just want to thank you for that lovely letter that you submitted, and let you know that that helped make a difference. As I mentioned, tomorrow, they'll hold their annual Cherokee Nation gathering at the Autry Museum, right here in LA. And therefore, colleagues, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I hereby recognize the Cherokee Nation for your support with Indigenous Peoples' Day. We've now created a national movement, and I think that we're really just getting started. To accept this special recognition, and to say a few words, we have Principal Chief Bill John Baker. Thank you, Chief.
Ose O, Nagata Wu. Hello, everyone. It is truly an honor and a privilege to be before this body today. Our hats are off to you for being so forward-thinking as to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. As the councilman said, we are the largest tribe in America. We are a sovereign nation. We have over 365,000 citizens, and over 25,000 of them right here in California. And over 2,000 call LA home. So we've been here a long time, from the first gold rush to present day. And to have one of the second-largest city in America to recognize the importance of the tribes, and to try and tell the true story about America, and how it evolved around the tribes, not despite of the tribes. But I've got a great group of Cherokees with me today, my Secretary of State, and a lot of our cultural people, and I would give a personal invitation to each and every one of you to come out to the Autry Museum tomorrow and partake. Eat with us. Visit with us. It will be a family picnic with a lot of your citizens who are our citizens. The, thank you so much for your doing what you do. As I read some of your mission and your goals, it is not much different than ours. We take care of the least amongst us. We worry about housing and homelessness, and we care about the dogs and the cats as So thank you for your good work. It appears that this body has a long and storied history of taking care of families. God bless each and every one of you, and may God continue to bless the City of LA and the Cherokee Nation.
Thank you, Chief. That's beautiful remarks. Thank you. And Chief, and the entire delegation, a token of our gratitude to the entire City Council and the city leadership, we present you with a certificate of recognition, and congratulations.
And we have a Marquise, you've got a special introduction you'd like to make?
Back in November of 2007, this City Council and the mayor adopted the South and Southeast Los Angeles Community Plans. Those are, collectively, those two plans encompass a region that is home to almost 600,000 Angelinos, a vast and vibrant area that has great assets and opportunities, yet has long been burdened by the stigma of disinvestment, discrimination, violence, and neglect. The two community plans were developed in partnership with the South LA community, and include updates to policies, targeted changes to land use designations and zones, and extensive new implementation ordinances. They build on existing strength while tackling issues that South LA has been challenged with for decades and decades and decades. The plan addresses our dire need for housing, allowing for 25,000 additional units of housing than we would have had before. The plan, and I was very impressed by this, had deep, deep, deep community involvement. And so there were over 250 meetings. Some of the people sitting here that we're recognizing today became so familiar in the community that I actually thought they lived in the 8th District, because they were always coming out of one building or into another. They became well-known to the community. They heard the concerns and disappointments and heartbreak of many community members, but they also heard the hopes, and tried to build a plan around that. And so this plan revitalizes major corridors in the 8th District, the 9th, the 15th District, and a little bit of the 1st. This passed, this, October of this year, the California chapter of the American Planning Association recognized the Los Angeles Department of City Planning and awarded them the 2018 Award of Excellence for a comprehensive plan and a large jurisdiction award. Let's have them stand up and give them a big round of applause, led by Mr. Vince Bertoni and Faisal Roble. We'll ask, you guys can just say a short few words. This is, I think this is a pretty big deal.
Mr. Herman, sit down. You're disrupting the meeting. Thank you.
I think this is a pretty big deal that our plans were recognized by this institution that looks at plans all over the entire United States. And so we're very proud of the work that you've done, and very proud of our committee chair, Mr. Wizar, and the members of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee. Mr. Bertoni.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. Thank you, Councilmember Harris Dawson, and I want to thank the City Council. As the councilmember mentioned, this was a true partnership with the community, the City Council, and with the Planning Department. This award is actually the highest award that our state gives for things such as this, which is comprehensive planning. And I have to say, it couldn't be done without this amazing staff that's behind me. I say that we really do probably have the best planners, I think, not only in California, but in this country, and they've all worked tirelessly on this through, some of them have been on these plans for about 10 years, and it really wouldn't have worked, happened without their amazing hard work, dedication, and their commitment to working collaboratively with community. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you all so much. We're very, very proud of you, and the residents of South Los Angeles, thank you, and the City of Los Angeles thanks you. We're so proud. Another big round of applause for our Planning Department.
All right, colleagues, while Joe Buscaino is making his way, we're gonna go ahead and take up item eight, the remaining of eight.
And that is 8A and 8C.
Right, and that'll be the confirmed lean, so we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15, nice.
Okay, those are approved. Thank you.
And Mr. President, there are requests to send items 2, 3, and 4 forthwith.
It depends on who made the request. Okay, we'll go ahead, and without objection, that'll be the order. All right, Joe, you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's with great pleasure and honor that we pay tribute this morning in council chambers to Antonio Verde, the Consul General of Italy here in Los Angeles. And as you know, the Consular Corps in Los Angeles and beyond the country, they rotate every four or five years, and we will be losing Antonio Verde, the Consul General here, with sadness, because I've had a profound love and appreciation over the last four years and working hand-in-hand with Mr. Verde. He's been serving as our Consul General since October of 2014, overseeing jurisdiction extending to Southern California, New Mexico, Arizona, and Nevada. He dedicated to pursue a career in political science and international affairs, and has certainly done so throughout his 25 years with the Italian Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Mr. Verde has held diplomatic offices in every corner of the globe while maintaining his heart in Italy. He's called Los Angeles home for the past five years, when he moved here to become the Consul General of Italy. His work focuses on fostering better understanding between Italian communities and the formal institutions that are put in place to help their livelihoods. And as you know, the Italian consulate in Los Angeles has jurisdiction of one of the largest Italian-American communities in the United States, and has been able to become familiarized with the vast and vibrant network of local groups and associations. And in the consulate, he's been committed to work closely on a daily basis to make procedures more efficient, while also making the communities in his Consular District closer. Over the course of the last four years, we've done more than any other Consul General. We have established relationships, an official friendship port, relationships between the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Palermo, and most recently, Friendship Port MOU between the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Naples. And he was instrumental in facilitating the first business delegation in 2006, led here in Los Angeles by our Sister Cities Association, where we focused on trade, commerce, film, and arts. And he advocated for bringing more Italian-based businesses. And he advocated for bringing more Italian-based businesses to Los Angeles with the Italy-America Chamber of Commerce West Association, and just blessed our effort to bring back the little Italy and Corso Italia to the downtown San Pedro area. So with that, let's give him a round of applause for his service to our great city, and help me welcome Consul General Antonio Verde.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Joe, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests. A very good morning to all of you. Before we get started, I'd like to express my sincerest appreciation to Councilmember Joe Buscaino and to all of you for organizing this special gathering, to acknowledge and cherish this past years of collaboration between the Consulate General of Italy in Los Angeles and the city of Los Angeles. We all know that when we achieve something, we usually do so because others have helped. One voice alone, even if strong, is not enough when compared to the achievement of the greatest benefits of collaboration. And I can say today with both pride and gratitude that our relationship over these years have been truly remarkable and instrumental in implementing all the projects we realize together and in overcoming the issues we face to ensure the well-being and safety of the local Italian community. Just recently, as Councilman Buscaino reminded, we have been able to reach an historical agreement between the Port of Naples and the Port of Los Angeles, an agreement that enables and encourages the development of further important activities while devising a bold strategy for the future. The last few months have been also crucial for the designation of the historic Little Italy in San Pedro, recently nicknamed Lila, Little Italy in Los Angeles. San Pedro indeed represents a vibrating center of Italian activities due to the presence of significant group of Italian-Americans who came to the U.S., mainly from Ischia, that's a twin city of Los Angeles, as you know, and Sicily. They were among the many enthusiast friends who joined us on July 2018 at the Maritime Museum, where we presented the new Italian Museum of Immigration of Naples, and illustrating an exciting study concerning the strong relationship between art and ports. I'd like also to acknowledge last year's designation of the Italian Heritage Day. We are aware of the feelings of Italian-Americans concerning the cancellation of the historic Columbus Day celebration in Los Angeles and California, but we all appreciated the institution of a new Italian Heritage Day in the framework of the Italian Heritage Month as a precious occasion to keep on celebrating our history, our traditions, and the strong contributions that Italians offer to the successful development of the U.S. in general and most specifically of California and the great city of Los Angeles. And innovation and tradition define the exchange of knowledge and technology in coordination with the entire Sistema Italia, Team Italy Network, which successfully partnered, among others, with the Los Angeles Chamber of Commerce. Italian art and excellences were an essential part of several promotional operations made over the last year, not least a fruitful collaboration in organizing a major exhibition about our invaluable archaeological treasures that will be presented in 2019 at Getty Villa in Malibu to the effort of the Italian National Archaeological Museum. I think that it's important to underline that all these major initiatives were extremely well-received, not only by our community, but also, and above all, by Angelenos in general. The city of Angels, with its beautiful scenery and sunny weather, is a fortunate, fortunate and unique place where we were able to build a lasting and successful relationship of friendly and effective collaboration between our two diverse identities. However, it's a universal truth that we all have to face, whether we want it or not, that everything eventually ends. And while being extremely sad for the end of my assignment here and for my imminent departure from Los Angeles, I'm ready to take on a new challenge closer to home, since I would like to share with you that I've been posted to Egypt's capital city Cairo as Deputy Chief of Mission. And once again, I'd like to extend my gratitude to Councilmember Joe Buscaino, the entire city of Los Angeles, Mayor Garcetti, as well as the county and state authorities, for all the support and the sense of common purpose that guided our relationship thus far. Thank you for having supported me in these last four beautiful years and for having been part of this unforgettable journey. Grazie, arrivederci, thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Consul General. Non possiamo dimenticare la nostra storia, non possiamo dimenticare la nostra cultura. And you have been in the forefront, we cannot forget our history and our culture and our story, and you've been in the forefront of preserving that here in the last several years. We're going to miss you, good luck to you, and God bless you in Cairo. And with technology today, I know you're far, but you're near, so we love you and congratulations, we're going to miss you. Antonio Verde, Consul General of Italy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, colleagues.
No, thank you. For another special presentation.
Each year, the U.S. Senate, through bipartisan action, passes a resolution for National Retirement Security Week, encouraging the nation to save for and maintain a secure retirement. This year's event takes place October 21st through 27th. The city's Deferred Compensation Plan always participates in this event, using it as an opportunity to engage its active employees and retired participants on the topic of retirement security. Today, I'm very pleased to ask the City Council to lend its support, as well to the importance of retirement savings and taking good care of that savings when one becomes a retiree. I'd like to further acknowledge the value of the city's Deferred Compensation Plan and the important work being done by the Board of Deferred Compensation Administration and the Personnel Department in administering the plan and helping our workers create a secure retirement future. With over $6 billion in assets and 46,000 participants, the city's plan is one of the largest municipal plans in the country and is widely regarded as a leader in producing successful outcomes for its participants. So I'd like to recognize the plan's success, applaud the engagement they create through campaigns such as this, and thank you for supporting our commendatory resolution declaring Retirement Security Week in the city of Los Angeles. And now I'd like to ask the Chairperson of the Board of Deferred Compensation Administration, John Mumma, to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman. As indicated, John Mumma, 30-year Los Angeles Police Department Sergeant, and here today as the Chair of the Board of Deferred Compensation. With me is Wendy Macy, you know as your General Manager of Personnel, Stephen Montagna, who is the Plan Administrator, as well as his staff. We'd like to thank you for making this resolution. We believe very much that creating successful outcomes for our participants depends on effectively engaging them and encouraging those behaviors which support the retirement security. We're pleased with our plan's success. Three out of four city employees participate in the plan. They save an average of 7% of their pay. We have 10,000 retirees that are in the plan who keep their money in the plan because they can't get better fees or better options anywhere else. We believe very strongly in innovation. We know that the plan's success represents the individual participant's success. When our participants hear from elected officials like yourselves and the mayor, it helps nudge them to take that extra step to join the plan or improve what they're doing in the plan, or at least to take a look and make sure that they're on the right track for success. So on behalf of our participants, we thank you very much for your leadership on this issue and your ongoing support of this incredibly powerful and valuable tool for achieving retirement plan security. Thank you.[1180.33][1180.33](Applause).
Thank you, and I'd like to present John with the certificate in recognition of this important program, and also thanks to Wendy and Stephen and the Personnel Department for your support and your great work.
All right, let's everybody give a round of applause. Let's not defer our applause.[1207.74][1207.74](Applause). Thank you so much. Herman, you know, you've been disrupting this meeting the whole time, and you've been warned, and the council has suggested, and I agree, because you're disturbing, constant disturbing and disruption, that, Sergeants, if you could please ask him to leave. Thank you very much. Can you please ask him to leave? It was before, during the presentations, all of... Mr. Hunt, now you're disrupting the meeting as well. Did you want to leave as well? All right, Sergeants, go ahead and escort both of them out. Thank you. Go ahead and escort both of them out. Yeah, thank you so much.
So let me make this clear, the presentation is part of the meeting, you can't disturb that. And furthermore, Mr. Herman, you were throughout the presentation making constant motions and an obvious attempt to distract us, and you did so disrupting our work.
Excuse me, you're still disrupting this meeting, so please. Goodbye. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a wonderful weekend, thank you.
Okay, and they're continuing to shout rather than quietly leaving as they've been ordered to do.
Excuse me, Wayne, did you want to also? Okay.
And they're still shouting.
Thank you very much, goodbye. Sergeants, please escort him out, he stopped walking, so... Thank you very much, thank you. They're still yelling in the halls and disrupting this meeting, so I'll wait.
They are, and they seem to be under the false impression that because something's a presentation, it's not part of this meeting, and that they're free to disrupt it. That's not the case.
I appreciate that, they know the rules, and they were warned. All right, let's go ahead and turn our attention back to the public's business, if we could. And we'll go ahead and go into multiple speaker cards. Wayne?
Items 10, 9, 10, and 11. Yes, we started off very good today, then we went down that road, so let's get to the steep. Thank you to Lightstone DTLA, yes. Now see, when you do a good job, I'm the first puppet to say so, because I had to talk...
Stay on the agenda items, please.
Well, I'm talking about Lightstone DTLA, you little short shit. So I'm talking about the $100,000 that me, Mr. Spindler, and Mr. Wizar managed to get out of Lightstone for graffiti cleanup, cleaning up shit, cleaning up needles, and cleaning up piss on the fucking streets of Figueroa and over there by Pico, which Mr. Buscaino pronounces Paico, but it's Pico. And we want to do that to clean up the homeless trash occurring in our redevelopment zone. Because Lightstone is not like most developers, they like to talk to puppets nicely. Thank you so much. See, now we get to number 10, and the urban terrorist, the chicken head, Mr. Wesen Fuck Again, CD10, 3400 South Cochran Avenue, what did he do? The son of a bitch gave a lien against a nice, nice lady. So today, thanks to my work, not even Mr. Spindler's work, my work...
We're not, we're not on liens, you're not on the agenda items, so stick to the agenda item.
Number 10, correct? Yes, that's right, Mr. Fable, tell that, tell him to take another pill. Now, $1,743 is going to be waived, the late fees and interest. So again, on number 10, you're doing a good job, Mr. Wesen, thank you, and thank you for listening to me. Now we get to the maps. What about the maps?
CD 7.
We support CD number 7, that's from Monica, she's been a very good sport, so we support it. Then we get to number B, a map and CD number 2. Yes, $9,064 for the fucking map and CD 2, it's too much money. Stop stealing Cricorian, you fuck. Now C, number 11, that goes to the methamphetamine addict, Mac Bonin, on Idaho Avenue, also $964. Wait a minute, how the fuck can they all be the same fees? I say waive the fees, no, I'm against number C.
You said you were for it.
No, I'm against it. I don't like this fucking thing, no.
And one minute for general public comment.
So the general public comment is the dichotomy. Why? We just had an invited guest behind the rope being thrown out of the meeting. So we have a dichotomy, we have those that want peace, and they have those that continue to engage in warfare. But the good news is, December, we're getting rid of somebody on this council. He's a little tiny man with a little short dick and big fucking ears bigger than Dumbo, and that would be Mitchell Dumbo-Englander, who just can't stop illegally throwing out people on his way out. Then he steals $800 from all of his friends the night before he announces his retirement. So please, all of you that donated to that event, go to the DA, prosecute this short dick little mother...
Thank you very much, thank you for your kind words. Yes, thank you. You will be missed by no one. Okay, yeah, sit down. Next speaker, please, Antonia? Come on up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
She has one, you have one card on item nine, so one minute for item nine.
Number nine. Okay. You know how we can remove the toxic urban blight? It's very simply, by getting ICE, 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 and getting rid of all the wetbacks and the gangbangers, deportations, deportations.
You're not on topic, please stay on topic.
We need to deport these undesirable assholes.
Okay, it wasn't on topic either, so go ahead and start her one minute, then you can talk about that. One minute for general public comment. You're welcome.
...principal, please refer to the Tolucon Times newspaper, page 7, and voila, there is Councilman Paul Cricorian. Let me make a monumental correction. First, the El Puente, or the new bridge housing trailers for the American homeless that just opened is having tumultuous Latino chango, wetbacks, and gang-banging problems. There is theft, vandalism, graffiti, daily assaults, daily gang stalkings, harassment, and spiking the food, the coffee, and the drinks. The homeless supervisors, Daniel, Waldo, Asha, and Perla, are unfit to handle these uncivilized rogue chango savages. What we need is ICE, 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 and the LAPD to arrest, deport, and napalm these diabolical, illegal criminal undesirables and domestic terrorists. Why are we housing them and not law-abiding citizens? Why are we housing them, these gangbangers and wetbacks, when we should be housing military veterans? Again, stop housing these wetbacks and gangbangers.
All right, thank you. Ms. McAllister, come on up. Okay, items 8 and 10, two minutes. Oh, I'm sorry, 9 and 10, 9 and 10.
Okay, number nine, hello everyone. For all the people who missed me, I'm here. Okay, now, number nine, you want this company called Lightstone Downtown LA, DTLA, to pay $1 million. That means he's supposed to pay $100,000 a year to the city for Council District 14, Huzar. Now, this company has only been in business a year and a half, they're foreign-owned. Now, to me, I'm looking at this, this is nothing but a kickback. Why should he be, now, he has contracts. This guy, he's only one guy who owns this company. He has a contract at 1240, 1260 South Figueroa, they're doing a house over there, fixing it, building it, and one at 601 West Pico Boulevard. And now he's got city contracts, and he's got to pay $1 million. Now, if he doesn't do that 10-year contract, he has to still pay the million. That's nothing but a kickback, and nobody's keeping count of where this money is being spent. This is nothing but a scam to me, and we need an investigation. Number 10, here you want, you're rescinding a council's prior action on a lien, so here you're removing the lien. I'm complaining here, and I want to file a complaint. You took all the liens off the agenda, so we can't talk about them anymore. You have one lien here that you're taking off, and you said that they paid it. We want a list of all the liens, because people need to see those liens, and I'm still complaining about that 250% you're charging. Plus, people, when they see these liens, they're praying for these people. Some people have even had donors to come and pay those liens. So by you not putting them on here anymore, you are denying those people help. They need help. You see what I mean? Now, another thing, when you take those items off the agenda, you're supposed to have council meetings. You're not having any council meetings, so they should be on the agenda. We want to see all liens. You have non-other things, but they're not liens anymore. So I want the people to know, the reason I'm not talking about liens anymore, because the council took them off the agenda, and I want to file a complaint on that. My public comment is, I'm now an independent. This whole council is Democrat. The governor is a Democrat. We need a Republican in there that's going to work with President Trump, and his name is John Cox. He is a businessman, just like President Trump, and he's going to get these illegal aliens out of here and clean up. In case you don't know, we have a typhus disease spread in California. They're dying like crazy in San Francisco. Skid row has it. See, the media's not going to tell you this. I go online and do all my research. Typhus disease spreading throughout California, especially LA County. Look it up, it's online. So remember, vote for John Cox. Another thing, we need this council investigated, these lawyers that are not lawyers being paid over $200,000 a year, 300 workers that works in the city attorneys office. This is insane. I have never seen such corruption like this in my life, but I'm working to get it changed. I want my people, black people, off skid row. If anybody should be on skid row, it should be these illegal aliens.
By the way, just so you know, Herman Armando is yelling outside the windows of council. Okay, and Wayne, don't disrupt this meeting. So I want it to be on the record that he's continuing to disrupt this meeting. You can hear it in chambers, and it's, it needs to be noted for the record. Mr. Previn?
Thank you for noting that for the record, sir. I didn't hear anything. I will say this, that today we have a nice little bouquet of LLCs that are up in our business, and, you know, I think everybody, including this rude person from the CLA who walks right in front of the public, agrees that it is incredibly hard to follow. Now, DT LA LLC, certainly nobody, it's not hard to follow that one, because as Mr. Weezer will, I believe, celebrate... Oh, here comes rude man, number 2. We have $100,000 in community benefit coming. So one idea for that money is obviously to spruce up the blight and stuff, but the problem is, is that when we put stuff into a community benefit program, like in our district, I can't see Krikorian today, but we have a big chunk of money from NBC Universal, and our community is really getting excited about a mobile pit stop program that not one of the mobile pit stop locations is in the valley, and yet we want that kind of dignity, because I think Mitch O'Farrell certainly agrees that there's dignity in going to the potty in a place that's clean and decent, and where there is the special sauce, no disrespect there, the special sauce in mobile pit stop is an employee. An employee who makes 16 an hour and makes sure that everything stays clean.
You're not on the agenda.
Are you sure? GTM Holding LLC is certainly friends with LA Family Housing and Thomas Safran, but you may be right. Let me get on to which item. 9, 9 is safe. I believe we're safe on 9. I jotted that down. When in trouble, go back to 9. So I'm on 9. Wait a minute, we already talked about... Hang on, one point that was made earlier was, the liens being moved out of this hall is actually destructive to the people.
Okay, so again, that's not on the agenda, Mr. Previn.
Okay, but it's hurtful to...
It's not on the agenda, so why don't you go on 9, 10, or 11, please?
We're disagreeing about that a little bit, I'm going to have to say. I want to say one thing that is important, that the Native American communities were respected today, finally, after a long...
Okay, so if you can talk about that during general public comment, it's not one of the agenda items, Mr. Previn.
Well, then I'll go back to the final track maps, where Mr. Bonin, where Mr. Bonin, who raised $458,000 during his campaign for reelection and took $100,000 in matching money, is going to provide a landmark...
It doesn't sound like track maps.
It's not. So go ahead and start, there's one minute for general public comment. You could forfeit the rest of your time.
Today is the 19th, I think tomorrow is the 20th, and we'll be celebrating at Taste of Soul. I would ask Marquis Harris Dawson, who was down here today with the elderly dry cleaner who we all respect, to, when he's being surrounded by incumbents in the booth of honor at Taste of Soul, where you have paid out of the city's coffers, and Markardley Thomas paid out of the county coffers, and Metro coffers, and AQMD coffers, to Danny Bakewell, who gives you all campaign funds, not all of you, but some of you, please stand up for the women of Los Angeles, so that they don't have to be deported by Sheila Kuehl to Miraloma, where they're going to be incarcerated in a vulnerable area where they're susceptible to something called Valley Fever. And finally, the Ethics Commission, you've got Rob Quan here, he'll lay down the bullshit, but the truth is that this is not going to help the regular grassroots candidates at all. And Bonin's working at $11,500, that's not it. That's 100 people giving over 100 bucks. $25,000 in wages for an average CDator compared to $95,000 for Corets, who knows it's easy to raise $25,000?
Thank you, your time is up. So the next public comment?
Lawrence?
Lawrence? Is Lawrence still here? No longer here? Okay. Peter's no longer here? Rob Quan? You're the last general public comment.
Morning. Here to talk about the matching funds program. Met with almost all of your offices at least once on this, and was hoping we could leave you alone, but it looks like we're going to have more time on this. One important note on Councilmember Bonin's amendment to lower the aggregate threshold. Without it, it's going to be harder for everyone, and I emphasize that because we've done an analysis looking at past three election cycles, and we found that four incumbent LA City Council members would not have qualified for the matching funds program. I repeat, one-third of incumbent LA City Council members, nearly one-third, would not have qualified. Despite having massive war chests of hundreds of thousands of dollars, this maybe is not a reasonable barometer for support necessary for this program. We had the indigenous community here today. Thing I note most about them is a healthy skepticism of government, being first impressed by the American nightmare and not the American dream. If we're going to have a government they can believe in, let's show it.
All right, thank you. That concludes public comment, so public comment is now closed for the rest of the meeting. We're going to go ahead and, what's next before us? I believe we have a special agenda.
Yes, items 9 through 11 are also available for council to vote on.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Oh, next one. Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Mr. Chair, correct.
15 minutes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, request item 12 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. No problem. Next item?
Would you like to go into the special meeting at this time?
Yes, please, let's go ahead and take the roll.
Blooming Philbona, Buscayno, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coress, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Weson, 15 members in a quorum, Mr. President.
All 15, all right. So with that, we'll go ahead, that item has already had public comment.
Yes, item 12 has added public hearing.
Okay, and so there's no members on the queue? We can go ahead and open the roll on that item? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
15 minutes.
Okay, that is approved.
And that is the item that was requested to go forthwith.
Yes, so without objection, that'll be the order. Okay, forthwith, and we can convene the special, go back into the regular agenda meeting. We have motions for posting a referral?
Yes, we do.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those. And colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none? Just kidding. Okay.
You only got a few shots at those left. Colleagues, I'd like to invite you all to join me this weekend at the Third Annual Armenian Cultural Festival on Commerce Avenue. It's a free event on Foothill and Commerce, and it's got a lot of great, wonderful, free activities for families, and what I love about it is that it really draws out all members from our community. It's really quite diverse, but the food is fantastic, the music's fantastic, lots of opportunities to dance and show your best moves, so invite you all to join me at the Armenian Cultural Festival in Commerce. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Much, Mr. Chair. I just want to remind everybody that on tomorrow morning, starting at about 10:30, we will have the Taste of Soul on Crenshaw Boulevard. All of you are invited, your staffs are invited. Mr. President will be there, Mr. Price will be there, Ms. Martinez will be there. If you give us, if you call us or give us a text message, you might be able to make it, so you can ride in Council President's golf cart. He has a little golf cart that goes up and down Crenshaw. But we'll have a good time, in vogue, genuine, and a bunch of groups from the '90s will be performing there on the street. It's free to everybody. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
That's cool. That is very cool. So I've got an announcement as well. Been giving these a lot lately. No, this, so Saturday night, Saturday night. Wow. Saturday night, Saturday night, I'm going out with my wife. No, Saturday night, we're having, you know, we started in CD 12, this is one of the coolest things we started, that I helped initiate, was the Movies in the Park, and I know quite a few of you do those now as well, and I think the community love them. A few years ago, we brought it up a notch, and we're doing drive-in movies now, too. And so tomorrow night, we're doing a drive-in at Cheddar Ranch Park, and we're going to be showing Sandlot. So it should be a lot of fun. But, yes, Mr. Coress.
I'd like to announce that our own Wendy Macy adopted Mel, the tabby Maine Coon cat, so we have a successful kitty cat adopt.
Wonderful. Excellent. So for those of you that wanted to finish this, for those of you that want to come out to the movie night, if you don't have a car, that's okay, too. You can come pile in Council President Herb Weson's golf cart, watch the movie. He'll share his popcorn. Mr. Sadio, did you have one?
Yes, the golf cart will also be making a stop by this Saturday night at our Street Food Cinema, and we're going to be showing Coco, Coco en Espanol, which is redundant in some ways. That is at 12, I'm here all week, that is at 1245 North Spring Street, and it's going to be at the Alley State Historic Park, right adjacent to Chinatown. Chinatown adjacent.
Excellent, thank you. By the way, this...
Or, as we would say, Alado de Chinatown.
We, they were here some time ago presenting Coco, I think it was when it first came out, was it a year or so ago? And they gave us all those, the guitars. So, Mr. Sadio, I still have mine in my office. If you want to send one of your staff members to come pick it up, and you can give it out at your movie, that would be cool. Yeah, all right, it's yours. Done. I know Mr. Weezer wanted it, but he's been lobbying for it. It's above the gift limit, yes.
Also, on a more serious note, this Sunday will be a bi-national forum, and there will be representatives from the Mexican government, a whole range of elected congressional members, state senators, and governors will join us here for a very robust discussion, bi-national discussion, on immigration policy and their proposals for the new incoming Mexican president and his new government, which won just about every state in the entire country, and their perspectives on changes in the Trump immigration policy that is ravishing Western Hemisphere right now.
Excellent, thank you. Seeing no other announcements, colleagues, do we have adjourning motions? I'm looking to my left. We do. If we can have everybody please rise in council chambers. Mr. Weezer?
President and colleagues, I would like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Teresa Esparza de Sanchez. Mrs. Sanchez was the grandmother of Ulysses Sanchez, a great friend of mine and to many of us here in City Council and City Hall. Teresa Esparza de Sanchez was born on October 15, 1928, in the town of Huchipilas, Acatecas, Mexico. She was one of 10 siblings. She married Jose Guadalupe Sanchez on April 9, 1956. Years later, her husband migrated to the United States and settled in Pacoima, California, where he worked at a local liquor store. While he was away, she raised their children on her own, making tortillas during the day and turning their home into what now, what now we call a pop-up restaurant at night. And their collective work as parents, one in the US and one in Mexico, is a common but no less incredible story about the great lengths devoted parents go through to support their children and family. Teresa enjoyed music and dancing, especially when she was surrounded by family and loved ones. Her faith was very important to her. As a devoted Catholic, she prayed daily and believed deeply in the spiritual call to help others whenever and however you can. And because of her enormous heart and enduring spirit, Teresa was one of those people who was literally cherished by all who had the good fortune to know her. Before everything else, for Teresa, there was family, and it was with her family that she found her true joy. She was blessed with a large, immediate, and extended family, and they in turn kept her spirit young at heart and allowed Teresa to enjoy her golden years in peace and happiness. Teresa passed away on the morning of October 15, 2018, which was her 90th birthday. She lived a full life, one which touched many, many other lives. She is preceded in death by her son, Jesús, and survived by seven other children, María de Jesús, Jose Guadalupe, Alma Rosa, Juan José, Jorge Alberto, Julio César, and José Sanchez, as well as 23 grandchildren and 26 great-grandchildren. She had a beautiful sending off in Mexico, surrounded by all who she loved, and she would have wanted it that way. May she rest in peace, and our prayers go out to the family here in the United States, and particularly to Ulysses Sanchez. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May she rest in peace. Looking to my left, yes, Mr. Harris Dawson?
I ask colleagues that we adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Mr. Randolph Freeman. He was an honorable United States Army veteran in the 173rd Airborne Battalion in the war with Vietnam. He passed away this past October 6 at the age of 73. Mr. Freeman was born in Texas, attended Bragg Morris High School, where he developed a love for music and playing the trumpet. He enlisted in the US Army at the age of 18, and during his tour of duty as a paratrooper, he was awarded the Purple Heart for his service and sacrifice, and awarded the Rock Medal, an honor bestowed to those exhibiting outstanding courage and a sense of calm under extreme conditions. Following his discharge from the military, Mr. Freeman planned a tourist visit to Los Angeles in the month of April. While he was on vacation, he met a beautiful, career-oriented woman named Evelyn, and I guess Mr. Freeman didn't mess around, because he came in April and they were married by August of 1966. They had three children and maintained a strong commitment to family and community. Mr. Freeman served on the Windsor Hills Elementary School Site Council, was a local Cub Scout leader, and a longtime member of the Holman United Methodist Church there in District 10, where he sang in the choir and was a regular Sunday school teacher. He was also a hard-working entrepreneur with the environmental service consulting firm. He was hailed as a small business owner who provided opportunities for others to work and to go into businesses on their own. Even though his, even in his passing, he continues to be a blessing to others by providing the gift of sight through the donation of his corneas to assist in the restoration of sight for two recipients. So many years of service, so much devotion to our community. He leaves his three very accomplished adult children and five grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Coress, you wanted to add, I apologize, I didn't see you earlier. Do you still want to add something to? You're good?
No, I only wanted to ask you to remove Mr. Spindler, who was making goat noises and interrupting all of the...
I appreciate, that's hard to hear up here sometimes, so. Okay, have you started your lunch already?
No.
Okay, all right, seeing, what? I'm hungry, I'm just, we are, we are adjourned. Thank you.